......... Versus being standing on the flag. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag. To stand. First, by reading the opening of the town meeting. If there are no objections, then we're not going to read our article. If you do that, and you can take care of the... Of any objections to not moving them. Oh. I got called. My name is Prabansha. I live in Tunbridge. I live on a farm. I'm a sophomore. I'm a most famous student. Second year model. So, history teacher down in Tunbridge. Preferred member of the historical society, any commission. Yeah. So, I'm a modern, as a cowboy, but not a Latin American person. That's all. And, thank. So, anyways, I'll read the first... Of the warning. And then what we've argued is a question. So, voters of the town of Tunbridge are hereby notified and warned to meet at Tunbridge Central School on the seventh day of March 2023 at 10:00 a.m. to transit that town business. So, Article One is to elect a moderator within two years. I will now give it up to the clerk to take nominations.
I will open the floor up for nominations for moderator. All right, wait one second. All right. Okay. So...
Thank you. Just a couple things. One, is this...
Sorry. Please step one forward. You don't want your show.
This is the first time the town has come together. So, this is the first time the town has come together since before the pandemic. And I just want to compliment the town of Tunbridge. Gary was just telling me that there's only 69 towns out of 252 that still do floor meetings. Recently, they're not working now.
Oh.
Well, the governor just extended the ability for towns to go to Australian ballot. And the town of Tunbridge with the... Hello. Now, Tunbridge has done just the opposite. It has persevered. It has, as we've gotten through the pandemic. And I think this is the test for select board members of town. And I would probably start there, just never go back. Because this is the purest rule of democracy. For cleaning conditions, which is for you are the legislators. The moment we go a little block and check that, no, we do a lot of right there. That's my personal town vote. So, rolling the... On historical society, I have a table back there. And you have, you have a... So, if you are interested in this beautiful bill back there, there's a... A plan here. Now, for the ladies, please go to historical society. There's a little informational sheet about what we do, how you can get a hold of us. All you have to do is... Um. Also, as you walked in, there's more than likely somebody who's not been to a town meeting before, or other town meeting before. There is a Robert's Little Cheechee designed. That kind of gives you kind of the lowdown of what to do. And I'm familiar with some of that very briefly. You will go wait for lunch approximately around noon. Because let's be honest, I know you can go at 1:00 p.m. Um. If you get a lunch ticket, if you're lunch ticket, that might get you a free pie. There's only one thing better than pie, free pie. Okay? So. So, the warning, obviously found on pages four and five. Uh, only illegal voters in the town of Tunbridge can vote and speak in town meeting. The way you are designated as legal voter, of course, is for having free index progress. So. Everything here is up on floor, from floor, which means that motions need to be moved and seconded. If you move, if you speak, please say your name and we'll go over there. If I do that once, um... She goes on the road, she's... Um, so please, if you are, are you moving a motion, you're seconding a motion, please say your name so the clerk can take down who made those motions. Um, I will try to recognize people in the order that they raise their hands. Okay? That is sometimes easier said than done. The person who made the motion has the first right to speak. So, you make the motion, you have the first right to speak. I will try to recognize you in the order. Please do not speak until you're recognized. Okay? So, until I call your name or call on you, please not speak. Um, you can technically only speak twice per hour. Okay? So, you speak once, and then everybody else will put their seat, and you can speak again, and then you're done for that hour. Does that make sense? There is a time limit of 10 minutes per speech. If there are no objections, I would like to limit that to five minutes. Are there any objections to that? You need to go to the office for... There are no objections. You can go on. Um. Direct comments should be directed towards me. Obviously, there are more than likely questions for town officers. That's perfectly okay. Most importantly, remain civil. Do not attack the person, attack the idea. Okay? So, we'll make sure we do that. Everything's done by voice vote, as we're trying to know. If the voice vote is close, if it sounds like ages and an age are kind of close, and sometimes the age a lot of the days, you can call for division. What that means is you just say division. What we'll do is we'll take a standing count. So, we'll have the eyes stand up, we'll have them, we'll have names, and the seat will actually... What? Um, seven basically, paper ballot. So, at any point, seven people can stand up and call for paper ballot. And then what that means is you'll take a piece of paper, you'll show your duty card. It's up here, and then we'll count it on the more... Anyway. Articles can be amended. So, you can make a motion once the article has been opened, make an amendment, which means you can change what it is. It has to be germane. Germane means relevant. So, you can't say, oh, the question is, you know, shall we fund $50,000 for a truck? You can't change, you can't amend. You can also have a secondary amendment, so you can amend your amendment. And that gets really squirrely, especially for me. You can only do one amendment and one secondary amendment. I just go with the quote. Um. You can also call it a question. So, what that means, calling a question means that if you want to end discussion, you, you have to be recognized by me, by the moderator, and then you can call the question. And what that means is we end discussion and go right to our vote. That requires a two-thirds majority. Okay? So, meaning that the discussion about the truck is going on and on and on and on, you can stand up, raise your hand, and I will call them. I call the question, needs to be seconded, go to the vote, third vote there. Let discussion. Um. Please stand. Please stand. And when you're recognized, and again, your name will be in the... In the town vote. It's not a town vote. Other business is non-binding. Other business, only things that you voted on, things that are properly won. Therefore, if you want to bring up something in other business that's other than, thanks for all the work, we cannot vote on anything that is binding. We can't vote. It's not... Don't go there. Um, nominations, if you are nominated, you can decline. It's very important. So, you throw your name up there, and you're like, I don't want to, you don't have to. Um, and then, of course, we would like, for nominated, a one. How long about yourself? That brings... Um, are there any questions on any of that? It's all on your cheat sheet. There'll be a quiz later after lunch, when everybody's... I'll go from pies. Okay? So, what we're gonna do is we're gonna move to Article Two. To hear the reports of town officers, collective delinquent taxes, auditors, library, listeners, cemetery commission, planning commission, recreation, select board treasurer, and trustees of the public funds. What I, what we ask, I'm gonna use a baseball analogy. All right? We've got to start on one up. What we need is somebody, plate, somebody on deck, and somebody moving the hole. That way we can execute. So, you are, we'll start with town officers, and then we'll go to the collective taxes. And then hopefully, the auditors are on heels. Okay? No further ado, because I go very good. Hello, everyone. Okay. One of the... Um, for the part of the... The town of... They return to meeting. And I want to skip all the... I don't want... There are... Want to... Um, I already have a whole lot of... From the... What we... I want to... Please, we're... Um, see if it's possible that you... We have... If I don't... Um. Do you have one? See? Yeah, I love this.
It's... Okay, so I... These ones... Good. Our... I was in the... I heard from me. They have... Is... It can be... Look, people were... I don't know. There is... I want... And... To... There were... Another... Father of the daughter. And it's on to your condition. Right? And... Please? But... And why would it be the... Thank you. To the referee. That's... I'm going to... And this year, we have... So, somewhere between... The page, and the chart, and stuff. And then we're going to... Maybe... We got the page, on the page, and sort of the nation. And what is... Finding out where... Starting to... And then... That, please.
Fire here.
My... My... My brother's beautiful. My name is... So, my name is... Um, it's there. It's there. I say every year, I often have to be that far from home. Every day, whatever you're doing. So, school board meeting, I'm actually... Issues that are... Probably, you know, people are... They think the... Or maybe, like, that seems to be, and this is... And then you... So, we might know this is to speak in any... Are there people that... Well, you aren't talking to you, and we're going to be... So, ultimately, in fact... So... In your... Be done here, then maybe we will see the... Program this... For... You know, you think the town hall... Is... And... And then I feel... And I... I mean, I think... I think, uh, so well, some people, this is so... I can be... If you guys... And... That... Even program, well, the post officer, look, he read... She got... I'm serious about it. And he's... Not need to have read. Just... Very... Or... I'm not about... You're... Okay, well, we... We're going to go to the... I'm going to tell you... And only you... Or... We can become one day thirty-one. There is one in a... Three... And you can... That's... Okay? They are... Yeah. And... And of... See... For... Is one fifteen, which running... So, we're in for a state staff and town... Then they... Now, I'm... Get away... For... For one fifteen. We leave... The... That is not... Please... And it's four... Well... Here's one... For... Yeah, for eighty-one percent. Four... We look... You're... Yeah. All... You can... No... Well, I... This is a big... Thing for our... And I say... You can... Say, in... You know, and then... I mean, I agree. Then your decision has really been getting to this town, third... One... This is... The... Finally, to move levels, honest, we are a seal. There... We... We... It's... It's... Thank you, Paul. You're... Move. If you have... Last, I have a... That's one. This is... How great you are. So... I mean, all the... It's wonderful. Yeah, you appreciate that, please. But even though I'm... Yes, I'm getting one more thing. Before you... And this is... Okay.
You want to hear from the cemetery? That's... Article can be found on page twenty-nine. I don't think anybody's here, so we'll move on to...
Go more... For... No, I'm gonna... You know, the... Or if you want to use any other... People. There's... Up. Yeah. I'm gonna... Say... So, this... Um, and... Great. So, I think you're on the forty-two-one. Yeah, sorry, yeah. Forty-two, fifty-two, number... Well, you have a lot of... Well, you have to tell a lot more. Talking about every year, though, it's really less than the public of the and completely so part of the so much of the that can be one this more than you there. To so now you see I want to see for long. So so we but you know, this is how so you have you know, that the part of if you want and if it's not it's not that's all because it is now can't see or not. Well, you know, the our so it's thank you. Please. So the part of that we so we really I Mm hmm. You so we that we have a grant, a application to all the for it's and they find but so why right so it is so yeah, it's I anywhere activity. Every as a no so all of this for three so we bring it up on the so so can't and three really not large or you know so four. You don't okay. But you so so that's it's really on our um here. It's but many others and who and I so I and and love you. It's a lot to do and not the and so I we and so and this a bit it's but now I can walk to so maybe do people but we don't and I'm and like any other I don't they're he so I have eight and kind of really to say to this this and the way that more they so what if you we can that you please yeah. They they and and only we don't particularly in the so we Hello. So you so was five. Um I yeah. Yeah. So so do I one yeah, you know. Yeah. I I was hey, um I there all there is application on the spending then are there everybody. That was period. What uh a lot of be so we this last for the model structure bring needed the most definitely. Right now. We simply but but this I have to share. But we from here. You see so on what I see. Or that John that yes. But uh like happy results of the over we do the we have um on that's why why oh what sorry. Uh we're all the we yeah we want to follow thank you. Absolutely. What on hey please for please God and what please I think you what so what you can first yes. What um let land to I thought all that was that all to so you see see you do do that or you are yeah. These well very very we measure box even so the or the the Maybe. Yeah. That's. There. You. Oh. Hi. Thank you. But though. I think. Appreciate. Hello. We'll. Most. We've got. What is the overall? We should. I don't. What? Come on. Come on. This is. The law. And they just. So. Especially. Okay. So now we. We are. What? Do you? Um. But not. We're. We. So. Please. But. This. You're. My. This. The. Are you? No. For. You. You. I'm. What's that? So we can. All. Rediation. EBS. Our. Our. We. For me. We. I do. I'm. For. I. And. I'm. Yes. Uh. But. The. And. Probably. Of. And. I will. Wait. Okay. It is. No. For. Other. Stop. It's. Thank you. I'm. Oh. Thank you.
Hello. Um. I don't want to say. Uh. Now. Um. So. I don't like. You. Well. I understand. Uh. Uh. That's why. Um. He. Well. You can say. Two. Uh. Mostly there. Called. Um. And. Yeah. Still. Um. Uh. And why? I would say. For. If you. Um. Can you really? Is that? There. Something. Very. To. And. I can. They have. As well. So. Make. I think. It's. Of course. We now. Wow. That's. All. So. Of course. You're. Now. I would. There's. But. Probably. You have. Very. Yeah. Yeah. And. And. Hey. I think. This. Higher. By. So that's. Uh. Um. Um. I suppose. I. I. Your. Evening. Um. You. Come. When you. Where you. After. You. If. Yeah.
Motion to accept the officer's report. Second. Any discussion? All of them. Favorite. Vote. Say nay. Sir, accepted on Article Three. Shall the voters authorize? Shall the voters authorize payment of real and personal property taxes on Wednesday, November first, two thousand and twenty-three? By delivery to town offices postmarked on or that date, delinquent taxes having interest charge of one percent per month or fraction thereof for the first three months and one and a half percent each month pursuant to thirty-two BSA Section five-one-three-six thereafter and an eight percent penalty charged against them from the due date. Move. Second. Second. Discussion. There are no discussion. Are you ready for the question? Shall the voters authorize payment of real personal property taxes on Wednesday, November first, two thousand and twenty-three by delivery to town offices postmarked on or before that date with delinquent taxes having an interest charge of one percent per month or fraction thereof for the first three months and one and a half percent each month pursuant to thirty-two BSA Section five-one-three-six to thereafter and then to thereafter and an eight percent penalty charged against them from the due date. All those in favor say aye. All those close their hand. Motion carries. I'm gonna read it slowly kind of the first time and then I'll do it second time. Just so you. Listen the first time. Article four. Shall the voters authorize town treasurer pursuant to thirty-two BSA Section four-seven-nine-one to collect current taxes? So move. Second. Question. Discussion. Are you ready for the question? Shall the voters authorize town treasurer pursuant to thirty-two BSA Section four-seven-nine-one to collect current taxes? All those in favor say aye. All those close nay. Motion carries. Article five. Shall the voters authorize general general fund expenditures for operating expenses to be of seven hundred and four thousand, five hundred and fifty-four dollars and ninety-six cents, of which four hundred and fifty thousand, two hundred and thirty-nine dollars and ninety-six cents shall be raised by taxes? Was your question. Move. Seconded. Discussion. Yeah. By the way, we have a microphone. Wait one second.
Um. I know. And. Rather than. Assuming. And. Over. And. I'm. For. Or. I mean. That. How? Put. The. Can't. Um. So that. Those. Um. For. For what? Basically. People. And. The. Thank. You. Hey. Hey. Uh. He. Hey. I can't. Um. There. Um. That's. Uh. Here. Seventy-eight. And. We're. I don't know. Particularly. Would you? Actually? Not. No. It's. It's. You. That's. You. Give. Good.
For the discussion?
As. What maybe we need is a little better. For us. County.
Right.
This year.
It hasn't been discussed, but we we can look at it.
So. Okay, I've been in the business of the community by. So. And I was trying to think of what I guess. Was he gone? Um, if I can believe that she helped her friend play. Um, they can help me that they previously. Uh, so good. They are able to go with the morning with the camera. I don't know. I don't think so. So importantly. Really. What would you like to pray over? Yeah, they are. Um, I was. A lot of. Me. If it wants to be. Um. The. She. They're not. They don't say that. I don't know. Also. This. There's more. Um. And. It's been about. The share. Very. Um, I'm. And. Which you got off.
Thank you. So there's currently the. Do some. What's in one of them? Well. Well. Oh. They're probably never coming.
Question. Question is, shall the voters authorize general fund expenditures for operating expenses of seven hundred and forty-one thousand, five hundred and fifty-four dollars and ninety-six cents, of which four hundred and fifty thousand, two hundred and ninety-six cents shall be raised by taxes? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay. Motion carries. Onto Article six. Shall the voters authorize highway fund expenditures of one million, one hundred and fourteen thousand, five hundred and ninety-three dollars and seventy-five cents, of which nine hundred and sixty-nine thousand, two hundred and forty-three dollars and seventy-five cents shall be raised by taxes? What was your pleasure? Moved. Second. Discussion. There is no discussion. Are you ready for the question? Shall the voters authorize highway fund expenditures of one million, one hundred and fourteen thousand, five hundred and ninety-three dollars and seventy-five cents, of which nine hundred and ninety-nine thousand, two hundred and forty-three dollars and seventy-five cents shall be raised by taxes? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay. Guys have the motion carries. Onto Article seven. Shall the town vote to appropriate fifty-eight thousand, eight hundred dollars to support the Tombridge Volunteer Fire Department Incorporated? Motion. So move. Who made that motion? Seconded. What's your name, sir? Mike Morris. Discussion. There is no discussion. Are you ready for the question? Shall the town appropriate, vote to appropriate fifty-eight thousand, eight hundred dollars to support the Tombridge Volunteer Fire Department Incorporated? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay. What was the comparison? Roll it now. Article eight. Shall the town appropriate fifteen thousand, six hundred and forty-five dollars to support the phone line services pursuant to PSC two-six-nine-one? There are no objections. I'm going to read each one of those. Then. I wish I had. Motion. Something to move it. Move. Seconded. Discussion.
So again, you are here. For many other patients to get on. Such the work. The variety of itself. Getting his. Uh, I would propose an amendment to reduce the amount by two hundred and fifty dollars. You know, any one of those. Yeah. But. Um, when I do. Very. The. The more. I really hope. Because I know. So. I. I have a patient. They are fifty thousand, three hundred and ninety-five.
So there is a motion on the floor to amend the amount from fifteen thousand, six hundred and forty-five dollars to fifteen thousand, three hundred and ninety-five dollars. There is a second. Second. Go Nancy. Discussion. No discussion. See no discussion. Amendment to the article. On the article, any amendment one. Uh, shall the town appropriate fifteen thousand, three hundred and ninety-five dollars to support the following social services pursuant to twenty-four PSC two-six-nine-one? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay. Motion carries. Onto Article nine. Shall the town establish a reserve fund ARPA fund to be used to funding selected projects in accordance with twenty-four BSA Section two-eight oh four? Move. The second. Second. Discussion.
Maybe. The. I always tell the reason. How old? More. Help. Nations. Right. This is.
Um. Ready for the question? So shall the town establish a reserve fund called the ARPA fund to be used for funding ARPA selected projects in accordance with point four BSA Section two-eight oh four? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay. Varies. Onto Article ten. Shall the voters allow any surplus funds from the current fiscal year, fiscal year twenty-three to be moved into the ARPA fund? What was your pleasure? Anybody want to move it? Moved. Second. Seconded. Discussion. There is no discussion. Are you ready for the question? Question is, shall the voters allow any surplus funds from this current fiscal year FY or fiscal year twenty-three to be moved into the ARPA fund? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay. Motion carries. Article eleven, to elect all town offices as required by law. If there are no objections, I'm not going to read that. I'll go through it one by one. So first on this is a select board for any nomination. Nominations. Are there any other nominations? Seeing no other nominations, we'll close nominations. But cast a ballot for like Petrus for select board for a term of three years. Onto Lister. Lister for a term of three years. Any nominations listed? I'm talking.
Um. Uh, I think I'm going to define that. Respectfully. But my wife, she. Sure. Rudy or Helen, would you like to describe what being a Lister is? Do?
I don't. Maybe. Well, the. Well. I think. The. See. Decreased. A lot of the. All the. Where you were like. A lot of that. Who's. Okay. What? Yes. That important. First. Yes.
You know. Everybody jump up at once?
Does he?
Meaning that there are no nominations for people who want to be nominated? If there are no objections, we'll pass over that. Onto auditor for three-year term. Any nominations for auditor?
I'd like to.
Nominated? Are there any nominations? Seeing no other nominations, we'll close nominations. For please cast a ballot for Linda Hoyt for auditor for a term of three years. Cemetery commission. Any nominations for cemetery commission for a term of three years? Cemetery commission, are there nominations for cemetery commission for a term of three years? Any other nominations for cemetery commission term of three years? Seeing no, seeing no other, no other nomination, we'll close nominations, please pass, cast one ballot for that is silly for cemetery commission for three years. Onto trustee of public funds for a term of three years. Are there any other nominations? Seeing no nominations, we'll close nominations. Please, please pass, I can't speak, please cast a ballot for Matt Ross for position of trustee of public funds for a term of three years. Onto library trustee, library trustee for a three-year term. Yeah, if somebody wants to make a motion to add an extra. Make a motion to add another trustee. Discussion. I'm favorable to the second trustee for a three-year term, say aye. All those opposed say nay. You guys have them, so we have a nominee for library trustee, first nominee for library for a three-year term. No nominations, we'll close nominations, please cast a ballot for library trustee for. That's the last name. Three-year term, onto the second library trustee for a three-year term. You have a nomination?
Yes.
You don't have to, don't let this slide away. Onto collector of delinquent taxes for one year. There any nomination? It's a really great job. Nomination for justice liquid, are there any other nominations for collector of delinquent taxes? Seeing no more nominations, combinations, please, please cast a ballot for collector of delinquent taxes for a term of one year. First constable, there any nomination for first constable for one year's work? Any nominations? Any nominations for constable? Seeing no nominations. If there are no objections, we'll pass over both positions. Injections, okay, moving on. To elect town agent for a term of a year, any county agent? You have your hands up Janet? Onto town grand juror for a term. Oh, so apparently the legislature has got moving. Anyway, are there any? Maybe if you watch any of the town, or now's your chance. Right, you can look thin, it's not a good thing. Are there any nominations? There's no questions, we'll pass over, we'll close elections for town officers on December twelve. What is your pleasure? So move. Seconded, discussion. Hearing no discussion, are you ready for the question? Question is, shall the voters authorize the town to create a highway building capital improvement club? Anybody say aye? All those opposed say nay. Motion carries. What a word. No, if there's only, if there's only one nomination, then there's no need to vote, if the case contested, and then we have to go to paper ballot, it's uncontested, then we just pass one, one ballot. Thank you. Article thirteen, yeah. Do you have any sense of that? The position, the position of town agent, if we have to amend it, or just pass over it? Yeah, so it's been passed over, so probably in the future. So, any other questions? Article thirteen, shall the voters approve the surplus funds from last fiscal year, fiscal year twenty-two, to be divided equal in between reducing taxes and the highway building capital improvement fund? What's that? We just didn't do it, we just did twelve. Yeah. So what is your plan? Move to seconded, discussion. Becky, do you have the number for that? So we're asking Becky to give us the number of that combination.
That's developed by two thousand and seven, so these might be, these might be nothing, just trying to use them.
Well, that, that number is sixty-nine thousand six hundred and seventy dollars. Reach far, reach far. Any discussion? Are you ready for the question? The question is, shall the voters approve the surplus funds for the last fiscal year, fiscal year twenty-two, to be divided equal in between reducing taxes and the highway building capital improvement fund? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay. Motion carries. Other business. Or any other business, okay.
The day of the opportunity.
I mean, we would find for our generation. Those. The fact of the. Of the, of the. The plan is what you call. It is. Beautiful. My name is. And it's something. What is it? Hello. A lot of them. Hello. All the. The. All of them. So. The authority is in the. I think that was. Very good.
Want to have a nap in lunch. Uh, we think we still have a deal where the security. Um, actually, when we are. Um, and. You're coming here. For. You can serve anyone and organize the house. And. I'm getting to, you're doing the future. Uh, and I hope that it makes you love or enjoy being that. Then. For that. Why is it so like that afternoon? Hey. I'm. Hey, just comment and just also like looking at my brain. I also be like the kind of. Awesome. All of them. Everyone. In. The. And part of.
Or any other, other business? Yeah, and so just, uh, just a couple reminders that your ticket, keep your ticket. When a pie. And also, um, that, that people, you're gonna go up and go combine up here. And you sit down and then servers will bring you drinks and, and they don't need to get up after. So we're gonna go further business with their motion to adjourn. Second, second. All those who say aye. Who's opposed say aye. Can you go?